Okay, this is the regular meeting of the Garden City Planning Commission. It's Thursday, January 12th, 2023 at 6:30 PM. And I'd like to call this meeting to order. Uh, first order of business, would everyone rise to say pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, be seated. Would Secretary take the roll call, please?
Chairperson May.
Here.
Commissioner Steenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Here.
Commissioner Walls. Commissioner Kalidus.
Here.
Commissioner Mativier.
Here.
Commissioner King.
Here.
Next item is approval of the agenda. If we can have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motions made and supported. Any comments or discussion? Hearing none, take the roll, please.
Commissioner Kalidus.
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier.
Aye.
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Aye.
Commissioner Steenberg.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Uh, next item is approval of minutes from the regular meeting of December 8th, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of December 8th, 2022.
Motions made and supported. Any comments or corrections? Hearing none, would you take the roll, please?
Commissioner King.
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Mr. Mativier.
Aye.
Commissioner Kalidus.
Aye.
Commissioner Steenberg.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Our next item is public comment on non-agenda items only. If there's someone here who would like to make a comment on an item that is not on the agenda, you can come up to the podium.
I'm not.
Okay. Seeing no one, uh, we'll move on to the business items. First item, number one. PPL 22-0024, request for site plan approval to construct a new commercial building at 1847 Inkster Road in the C1 Local Business Zoning District. Could we start out with our consultant's report, please?
Good evening, everyone. The plan before you tonight, uh, the applicant, just as to let you know, uh, the applicant did previously receive a site plan approval to construct a, construct a commercial building on the site. Um, but as they went through Wayne County's engineering review, it took an extensive amount of time, and so the, our original city review, uh, approval has expired. So this is something you've seen before, but it has been updated and it has, it does reference some changes as required by Wayne County. Um, so this site is 16,480 square feet in area at the southwest corner of Inkster Road and John Hawk, and the applicant is proposing to construct a one-story, 4,600-square-foot building. Uh, this building will be occupied by up to four leasable tenant spaces, approximately 1,150 square feet each in size, if all four were occupied. The applicant does not have a proposed tenant, uh, at this time, so the building would be a leasable tenant space or a, what we term as a white box for new users. So any proposed tenant in the future would have to be permitted use or a special, or receive special use approval in the C1, for your knowledge. One other, uh, aspect to note of this evening is the applicant engineer isn't here tonight. Uh, he actually has COVID, um, but he did, uh, provide me with some comments, uh, with regards to the submitted material, so I'll be referencing those in. But I will go over my review letter based on the plan in front of you right now. So the site itself is comprised of three separate lots, uh, which the building is proposed to straddle, so those three lots must be combined, uh, as a condition of this site plan approval, if, if granted this evening. You have my letter in front of you, I'm just gonna go over some of the highlights of those issues, which, uh, I think need to be, have for your consideration. I do just want to also go over the architecture and building design. So the north, south, and east elevations are proposed to use a colored split face block, uh, while a standard concrete masonry unit block is proposed for the west elevation. Uh, they would utilize a decorative ephesus cornice, uh, proposed along the roof line of, on the north, south, and east elevations. And then this decorative ephesus columns would be utilized on the east elevation, so the front or Inkster Road elevation. So while attractive, uh, we would recommend possibly the applicant, if the applicant would consider, uh, providing an additional material to minimize the high percentage of the split face block on, at, at least on the, uh, front or the west, east elevation. You know, it's a simple, a simple two-to-three-foot-high stacked stone veneer along the foundation would provide an attractive contrasting base that's pretty, uh, common for modern buildings. You know, or a contrasting, even a contrasting colored block, uh, along that, uh, foundation could provide a similar effect. Uh, when looking at the north elevation, rather than having a blank wall, possibly vertical columns could be utilized, and that would be simply utilizing the same material, just having the, uh, uh, split face, split face block project out a mere three to six inches to create a column effect. Uh, and that's something that would create a vertical element that would be pretty attractive. Once again, this isn't required, but it's just something that we think of minimal, uh, changes that would, uh, create a even more attractive building. With regards to the site plan itself, we do request that the applicant, uh, the engineer provide a, that the colored split face blocks, uh, be integrally colored and not painted. With regards to parking, uh, based on usable floor area of 3,680 square feet, uh, the proposed 22 parking spaces meet the ordinance requirements, uh, for the, for the building. We would just note that the applicant, uh, should have, the engineer have a, the handicamp ramp detail on, on the, uh, site plan engineering sheet be revised. When looking at the building itself and then the part, the sidewalk in front of the building, uh, we recommend that the, uh, it be extended to seven feet in width to allow for a two-foot, uh, vehicle overhang. When it was just a five-foot width, the, uh, you know, typical trucks or vehicles minimize that passing lane, and so it doesn't meet that five-foot standard, uh, that is acceptable. Looking at landscaping, um, based on our ordinance requirements and the proposed plans, they are, are short, uh, 10 shrubs and four trees in total. And also the, um, the public right-of-way areas between the sidewalks and the road surface, uh, must be planted with grass, so that must be noted on a revised site plan. In addition, this site, this commercial site, um, by ordinance, uh, requires that they, that the commercial site provides a landscape screening or, or masonry wall adjacent to property, uh, zone residential. So the planning commission should provide direction to the applicant as what's the more appropriate method of screening along that west property line with the residential. Should it be the six-foot screening wall or, the zoning ordinance gives you the option if you, if you think it's appropriate to utilize, uh, landscape screening. But I, but just as a note, majority of our commercial properties do have the masonry wall along that property line. Um, with regards to sidewalks, a sidewalk is proposed on the Inkster side, but a sidewalk must also be provided on the John Hawk side. All property within the city now that is developed or sold needs to provide a, um, sidewalk on all public streets. And then finally, the applicant, uh, must submit a photometric plan. While the site plan shows, uh, some proposed, uh, pole lights, the, the, the plan must be, uh, must include a photometric plan to show the light levels to determine that minimal impact to the, uh, the adjacent residences. So while the proposed development is in substantial compliance with ordinance standards, there are some outstanding details that remain. Uh, the planning commission, uh, can either provide guidance to the applicant, or, uh, if the planning commission determines that, uh, these issues can be addressed administratively, uh, we recommend that any approval be granted contingent upon, uh, the items, uh, listed in our, in our letter, which are the items I highlighted. And just as a note, uh, the, when in communication with the, the applicant's engineer, they did submit to me a, um, email, and they have, have indicated they would comply with the, making this split face block, uh, integrally colored, uh, providing it a revised ADA ramp, uh, changing the sidewalk to seven feet, they were okay with that. They are, have no problem providing the additional required shrubs. Um, they are proposing a six-foot screen wall along the west property line, uh, and they are proposing to include the five-foot sidewalk along John Hawk, and they, they indicate they will provide a photometric plan. So that's the conclusion of my comments. Just as a note too, you do have, um, a copy of the end, a letter from the engineer who has his issues, and then, uh, before you tonight is a copy of the, um, fire marshal. They provide, he provided some comments as well.
Okay. Uh, next, if the applicant would like to come forward and make some comments.
Well, basically, in, in general, we were, you were here over a year ago to, 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 to request a site plan approval, which we were very fortunate for you to grant us that. But as Mr. Ortega said, um, you know, the Wayne County did delay us, uh, getting some things done, and as the site plan expired, uh, the approval for the site plan expired. But the city planner has touched on all the comments in regards to what the efficiencies were. Um, we are in agreeance with, with, with the comments, and I know you've sent, engineers sent the, some revised plans for you to review, but, I mean, in all sincerity, we, we agree with all the comments, and we do wanna make, um, the corrections, and we, I believe we already have, but, you know, the city planner has to review them just to make sure. Um, but, uh, we would like to move forward based on the engineer's comments and the site plan's comments as well. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Chairman May may ask a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Ortega, and perhaps you covered, and I missed it, I noticed the south side of the building you didn't talk about, and it seems very close to a home. Is that, could you just shed some light on that as far as the easement and the, the wall there?
So, yeah, so the, um, the zoning ordinance does allow commercial buildings to have a zero front, zero side yard setback, provided they, if they do not have any openings, so no doors or windows. So the elevation doesn't show any doors or windows on the new commercial building, so technically they're allowed to do that. Would note that they, I haven't, um, seen a survey or, uh, have anything specific with regards to the existing home and its distance from the property line. Based on an aerial photo, it looks like, obviously, it's very close. Chances are, it's probably less than the three-foot minimum required of the zoning district, cause it is, right now, it's zoned R1. So chances are, that house is legally non-conforming with regards to the setback. So that just means that when the house was constructed, we give the homeowner the benefit of it out that it was constructed in an order, in compliance with ordinances at the time. If now that house were to be constructed, it wouldn't, couldn't be that close to the property line. At minimum, they have to have a three-foot setback on their side, um, with regards to that. I did bring up that issue with, with the fire marshal, and he noted it, he, he noted that the same, close proximity to the, to the existing residence, but technically, as far as we can tell, there's no ordinance requirements that, that would prevent the commercial building from being located that close to a legally non-conforming home. Um, I will note too, that that property, while zoned residential, it's planned to be commercial. And then we've also discussed recently, uh, rezoning some of the property south of that existing home to commercial as well. So that whole block is eventually planned for commercial. That's not to say, you know, we can't factor in the existing home, but, um, as of now, there's no ordinance that says that, that the building has to, the new building has to provide any specific setback from an existing single-family structure.
Okay, um, if the new commercial building was moved further north, would there be enough room to move it, any distance at all, without completely compromising the parking on the north end?
That is a good question. Um, looking at it, I do believe it's very tight. Based on the site plan, it does look like they are at the minimum distance for the parking space and the aisle width. There's forty-
There's no room to-
Unfortunately not. In order to meet, comply with our current standards.
Yeah.
This was, I know, if I recall, we were having this issue, um, during our initial reviews of this, because we were trying to see where the building should be located next to the, given the existing home. I think at one point, the dumpster enclosure was next to the home, and that was, you know, not desirable.
Right.
So that's why, yeah.
Actually moved the dumpster, I'm sorry, I interrupted.
No, no.
Dumpster was on that side of the, of the property, and, and I'm not sure if it came from the city planner or from, from the commissioners here, that the garbage was too close to the residential building, so we, you know-
Shifted everything the other way, right.
I guess, so it was removed.
I remember us doing that.
Yes, yes.
I, I just thought possibly if there was a little bit of room to play with the parking, that, uh, we could gain a little space, but, uh, if it's already at the minimum, then apparently not.
Not that I can see, I mean, based on the plan, I guess one potential could be, I do believe they are proposing the, um, the minimum five-foot landscaping on the north side, on the John Hawk side, on the private property. In theory, the ordinance, I mean, not in theory, the, the ordinance actually does allow the planning commission to let the landscaping be planted in the right-of-way. So the, the five feet on that side could be, like, if everything shifted five feet, landscaping island could be located in the John Hawk right-of-way, and then the sidewalk, and then the travel lane. But it'd be pretty, it, I mean, but I don't know, I'm, I'm not sure what other-
Why?
Yeah, I don't know, that's the thing.
The dimension on the south side of the building.
Yeah.
Which is currently being proposed for a commercial zoning designation right now.
Right. But that's still going to have to require the building to be removed at some point, but it can stay there as long as they wish as an existing non-conforming use.
Right.
Even if we change the zoning.
I'm thinking of the, the screening that would be necessary between the R1 and the commercial, and if the R1 is slated to become commercial anyhow, I'd hate to see a major investment of a masonry wall there that wouldn't be necessary if another commercial structure sprouts up directly beside it.
Mm-hmm.
To the, to the west of the property, yeah, I'd like to see a masonry unit, because every other thing that we've tried in the 20-plus years that I've been here, it, it fails within the first one to three years.
Yeah.
Wood fences, landscaping dies, wood fences, people back into them and destroy them, and they never get repaired.
I, I agree, I agree.
And then we get complaints from homeowners and say, hey, there's this big hole in my backyard, and my dog gets out, and on and on and on.
We're, we're, we're okay with putting the six-foot wall screening on that side of the property to create that.
I, I, I think in this application, I'd like to see some, a little bit of soldiering on the west elevation, just so, because that's all residential behind it. Just so that the residents don't have to look at a barren block wall if there's a soldier course in the upper one-third of the building. Even if it was only on that side of the building, I think it would break it up and make it much more pleasing to those people that live directly adjacent. So far as the screening on the south end, very minimal to no screening, I think would be appropriate at this time, uh, rather than major screening, uh, of, um, landscape, which would necessitate-
There's not really much room for landscaping.
Right, I know.
Yeah. Do we have the flexibility to, uh, change the height of that wall? Because it wouldn't be quite as intrusive if it was a four-foot wall on the south side.
Um, yes, that's, that's feasible, especially since it's a side yard.
Yeah.
And actually, yeah.
The back would still have to be six, but-
I'm sorry, Mr. Commissioner, would be, I mean, I, I understand your, your point of future development to that side of the property, but, and, and maybe I'm kinda contradicting myself, but I would like to keep the six-foot screening on that side for two reasons. One, um, from a construction standpoint, these new masonry six-foot walls, they come in, you can actually slide them in between two poles, and we paint them to match the aesthetics of, of the building and, and the area. And also, I don't want the neighbor to complain about headlights, for some reason, shooting over to their property. So I, again, we will follow your recommendations, I just don't want a neighbor calling saying, hey, I got headlights coming from the yard, but we'll, we'll, we'll do what's best for the city.
Six foot has, has become, I think, the standard, and no more than six foot.
Right.
And as I understand it, it's because a police officer could stand next to it and possibly stand on his tiptoes if, and see if there was a problem, if there was a potential problem. He wouldn't necessarily have to climb over it to be able to visualize what's going on.
Yeah, the, uh, the sidewall will still be set back 30 feet, is that correct?
The, I'm sorry, the sidewall?
The screening sidewall on the south side would be set back 30 feet from-
From the sidewalk.
The right-of-way or the sidewalk.
Well, yeah.
Yes, yes. Yes, it has to be set back, uh, from the, from the right-of-way, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So it's not gonna come out much further than the house.
Yeah, that's true.
So it won't, I don't think it'll be that intrusive. I think, I think we can probably live with that. My only problem initially was I was a little concerned with the dumpster placement on the other side because of sightlines coming up on John Hawk, making turns onto Inkster. But I believe it's set back far enough from the corner that it, it won't be a problem.
That is correct. It's a 25-foot, uh, clear vision triangle area, uh, and that is set back far enough, that it's not in the clear vision area. So one vehicle will be able to be at the intersection and see the oncoming traffic.
See past it.
Mm-hmm, and see past it.
I think we covered that last time.
Yeah, and I do think, and actually, I do like that location, because with enough screening, I think that's fine. And it's similar to a dumpster location, not exactly, but similar to the one down here at Middlebelt and Cherry Hill, where the T-Mobile.
Yeah, but that one's not adjacent to a Cross Street.
No, no.
Do you agree with the, uh, the assessment that that's too tight a turn for the garbage trucks to make to put it in the net?
I think, uh, based on the, the circulating, uh, traffic vehicle diagram, I think they were able to make it. It would've looked to me. They do have to back out, but they would just be backing out, um, just to the, uh, the existing, to the proposed curb cut. Originally, when one of the configurations, when I was working with the engineer, we, they was placed along the west property line, but then they would have to back out and then reverse and then-
And make a turn.
And make a turn, yeah, at least in this case, it's a straight reverse shot.
Yeah.
Uh, the only other alternative would be to try to put in another curb cut, and that would just eat up parking spaces, and then they'd be, uh, it would, it would, it would cause them to not meet the minimum parking space requirement. So that's why I think this location does appear to be the best, cause they altered the curb radius as well.
Yeah, I believe it might be the best compromise. Okay, um, did you have any other, uh? Okay, well-
Brett, I have a quick question. This clarification for me and Mario, there was requirement was 22 parking spaces. I found it 18. Can we go over that?
Um, I believe it's 22, and, cause they actually do have one parking space behind the building. I don't know if you saw that, um, at, on the John Hawk side.
It's hard to see.
But it would, it says employee right there, so that actually fits as a parking space. And then you've got, uh, then you, there is another parking space between the dumpster enclosure and the Inkster curb. So, so that's where you get one, two, three, four, five. You get 11 in the front of the building, and then you get one, yeah, 10 on the John Hawk side, and then the one extra space behind the building, meaning on the, to the west of the building over the manhole.
That's not a fire lane or anything back there.
No, the, the fire marshal didn't indicate that was gonna be an issue. And that 10-foot setback is also provided, cause there is a, uh, they didn't wanna put anything over the sanitary sewer lines.
What do you think of the, uh, north elevation being all that stuff?
Why don't we conclude, uh, the applicant's presentation? If, if you're done, sir, thank you.
Can I make just one quick question?
For the applicant?
Yes, I'm sorry, I believe you said that you were in agreement with what Mr. Ortega had provided. Does that include the fire chief letter?
Um, I'm not sure if they had a chance to see that, probably not. No, sorry about that, I think I have a copy for you.
Well, okay. But I think our, uh, our approval's going to be contingent on-
I was just curious if he had been made aware of those requirements.
Because there, we haven't had, we really haven't had time to review the changes that they made to make sure it's all in compliance, and the city engineer hasn't seen it either, so.
I think the bullet points for the fire marshal are acceptable, reasonable.
Okay, great. Okay, then moving on, we'll, uh, move to the planning commissioner's, uh, discussion. So if, uh, if you have any comments or questions from the planning commission. Anyone wish to speak? Yes, Mr. Steenberg.
I'd like to see some breakup of the west and north elevation. It doesn't have to be as elaborate as the east elevation, uh, but I'd like to see something on the north, maybe that mimics something similar to the front, because that's gonna be exposed to everybody that travels in and out of that subdivision.
Well, part, one of the recommendations was putting columns on the north side, I believe.
Right.
Yeah.
Currently, it doesn't show it.
No, it, well, that's just a recommendation, that's not in their original proposal.
Right. I, I, I think the east elevation looks fabulous, very nice design, very-
Yeah, I, I do like the idea-
Very sharp design.
I do like the idea of breaking that up with the two-tone, uh, split face block, or the stacked stone, either one would be good, but it-
Cost-wise, I, I don't know what the best way to, to dress up the west elevation, it's such a, it's, it's so visual, uh, and it's all the same thing. I don't know if, uh, ephesus would be the best way to go, or a soldier course, or maybe-
Well, what about just making the two-tone block in the back, too?
Or, or-
I don't know if that's, would make a significant cost difference.
Yeah, no, I mean, may I?
Yes.
It was maybe, we could do, if we could do a, you know, four-foot section of a solid color block and then breaking it up, you know, with another-
With a lighter color or something above. With a lighter color or something above that, yes, because.
Yeah, so basically, like a sandwich type north.
Because that, that back wall is really visible from the sides, from the side street, as well as the homes behind it.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, I agree, yeah.
And, and if something could be done on the north elevation to lightly moderate, uh, uh, copy the, the east elevation, it wouldn't have to be that elaborate, but maybe something similar to it.
We could probably take it to the north and south elevation all the way around, so it would be like a U shape, you know, pattern.
I think that'd be great.
Yeah, we wanted to flow.
Yeah, I, I think that.
How do they, how do they bill out EFS? How do you pay for that?
We pay, we pay by linear foot, so, and depending on, I guess, the style and molding itself.
Okay.
And so, so the contractor, you know, basically, he'll give us a linear foot price, and then subject to, yeah, you want your Cadillac style, you want your, you know, your sport, whatever you want to. So those, those hot, those are our contract proposals.
I think for the backside, just the two-tone block would be adequate without adding a lot of extra detail.
I do, too.
Like, uh, harnesses and columns and things like that, I don't think that's necessary for the back.
I agree.
The, the north side of the building, on the other hand, is definitely in, in view of everybody.
Yeah, everybody's going to see it going in and out of that subdivision.
That needs a little bit, and I think maybe the columns that you suggested would be appropriate there.
Yeah, if you're gonna, if you can mimic some of the east elevation on the north and south, that'd be fabulous.
We can, we can definitely do it on the north, the south, I believe, is.
No, the south is against the house.
Yeah, the south is against the, the existing.
That, that's hidden, it won't, doesn't really require anything.
I, I like your recommendation of doing also something on the other side.
Okay, as was discussed, too, in your recommendation, you're talking about either a landscape screen or a wall, and I would definitely like to make that the wall, and not a landscape screen. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. And we can continue that on the south side from the building up to the setback.
Which cut sheet has the dumpster enclosure on it?
Um, it is.
I'm wondering what the materials on the dumpster enclosure are.
Uh, it's on SP two, and I actually, I do think the.
Does that mimic the building material on the building itself, or?
Actually, I think it's proposing brick.
I didn't know about that.
The detail itself shows a four-inch brick on an eight-inch block.
It doesn't say anything about the split face or color?
No, but it, um.
It should be the same block as the building.
Yeah. Actually, the dumpster enclosure is more detailed. Dumpster enclosure is a little nicer, it's like a standard brick, so, but yeah, that could totally be a split face, split face block that matches the building, that should be, is what it should be.
Yeah, I, I agree with you on that.
Mm-hmm.
Do you think it'd be appropriate to, to two-tone that, sandwich it as you called it?
Absolutely, there's no additional labor cost to doing that, or, or much costing materials to do that.
And what were the, the, the door, I'm trying to figure out what this is made of. The dumpster enclosure.
Yeah, typically, it's, it's metal, so we would have two overposts on one side of it.
Okay, two billiards?
Yeah, and then it would be, it would be a metal gate, a solid metal gate.
It does say painted steel gate, painted color to match the brick, so we'll change that to match the block.
Okay, that's why I'm not seeing any lacing or any slats in it, it's solid metal, huh?
Yep.
Okay, I like that.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? I, I think we're in pretty good shape, we, we need to review their return proposal to make sure that everything is in compliance with our recommendation, as well as the engineers and the fire marshals. I don't know that they've had a chance to submit anything for the fire marshal yet, but that needs to be.
How about landscaping to the north?
Uh, the landscaping, I think maybe we could delegate that to Mr. Ortega, if he would be willing to oversee that, rather than trying to pick out shrubs here tonight.
Yeah, what I know about them is some are green and some are brown.
Yeah.
Not really enough.
Too, too many of them are brown.
I have a question, so are we asking, are we proposing or asking to have them put a four-foot wall next to that house on the south side?
Uh, he said he would prefer to do the six-foot wall.
Okay, so that's what they're going to do, is the six?
Yeah, it wouldn't be, it would be from the front of their building up to where the, the thirty-foot setback would cut in.
So it's going to be the six-foot wall, not the four, okay.
And to Mr. Ortega, do you think whatever screening you envision on the north elevation could be done without irrigation?
Um, that's a good question, normally, it is required.
You mean landscaping?
Yeah, so if it's going to be deciduous or evergreen, they probably don't need irrigation.
True, yeah, most of the, most of the species proposed on the, on the John Hawk side are evergreen.
Yeah. So you can envision a landscaping detail that would not require any irrigation? Because we'd need the irrigation on here if we were going to do that.
Correct, yeah, and right now, it seems appropriate.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
Okay, so we, we want to include all of the recommendations when it comes to, to E, that would be the wall instead of the landscape screen. And as far as the landscaping goes, the FIDI planner will make final determina, determination on the type and placement of landscaping. The dumpster enclosures shall match the split face block on the building. I believe that's the only changes we made, was there anything else?
One thing I had a question about the, on the engineer's review, the item number seven, show hatches for all new proposed pavement types. Everything's going to be concrete. So.
Yep.
Does, is, does the plan as it exists, is that appropriate as, as it shows here, is there more that needs to be added to that?
Um, I don't believe so, because if all the materials are the same.
Well, yeah. Here, looks to be concrete from what I can see.
Well, I think what they might be referring to is that there's a different texture used for the Inkster approach.
Is that it?
I think, what he's trying to say, it's, because it does say new pay, asphalt pavement on either side of the sidewalk. So I think maybe that's required by Oakland County, Wayne County. And actually, then they have a lay, I think then what it is, is that the sheet SP two also says new asphalt pavement north of the building in the parking lot, but they use two different texture types. So I think that's why the engineer was confused, so it's a, it's a architectural CAD correction they need to make. Because looking at it, it seems like there's two different types of materials, but the labels are, say they're the same material, so that's a.
That's why.
That's just a note that the engineer wants to, to correct that, so that eventually, when we get to construction level, there's not that question as to what, you know, what type of materials are being utilized.
There's also the item ten that talks about eight-inch minimum amount of aggregate required for approaches to vehicle parking, but that's engineering stuff, and.
Right.
We should just put the letter with the.
We're just referring that review back to the engineers to make sure that their plan is compliant.
Okay. I, I'm trying to make sure there's nothing that's not going to pass now that we can get out of the way, rather than have them come back, maybe.
For sure, no, we want to get this done. Okay, what we need, a motion to approve contingent on these recommendations with the changes that were made.
I'll make a motion to approve contingent upon review of the changes that we spoke of tonight in conjunction with McKenna's letter and Hennessy's letter.
And the fire marshal.
And, and the fire marshal, which I just barely read.
That's a building.
I'll second.
That's building code stuff, that's for the building.
Yeah. So we have the three reviews, and we think we got everything covered.
I'll second the motion, Mike's motion.
That's the third.
I think Diane had.
Diane already seconded it?
Yes, she beat it.
Okay. Is there any comment or questions about the motion? Does the secretary have the changes that were added to the?
Yep, yep, so let me just read back, in addition to what was already stated in the review letter, we have the use of the two-tone split face block on the west elevation, and some columns on the north elevation. We're delegating the landscape plan to the zoning administrator, the six-foot masonry wall instead of the screening, and also the dumpster enclosure being the same two-tone split face block that's on the elevation of the building.
Sounds like all of it.
Okay, very good.
And now we're talking about the fire department's recommendation.
Well, that's part of.
That'll be part of the review.
These recommendations, the, the last item, three, is any condition as required by the city fire marshal and city engineer. So they will review any changes that they deem necessary. Go ahead and take the roll.
Commissioner Steenberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Kalidus?
Aye.
Commissioner King?
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier?
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Aye.
Chairperson May?
Aye. Well, we're approved, so, good luck, you, you still need to have the finished review. We approved a contingent on those items being reviewed and approved, so you can get together with Mr. Ortega, and he'll let you know.
That's why I'm here.
Thank you.
I think we asked enough questions to where the reviews will go smoothly, I think we've covered everything. And good luck on your project. With the weather the way it is, you might not have to wait till springtime yet.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, now it's going to.
Good night.
Good night. Next item, other business, discussion items, do we have any? No? No, 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 it's kind of, Brian, do you have anything? Okay. Commissioners' comments regarding planning and zoning matters. Mr. Klayas?
I have nothing tonight.
Nothing? Mr. Steenberg?
From Mario, anything new on the horizon, any concerns that you might think we need to know about, or any inquiries that sound promising?
So I don't want to get anybody too excited.
No.
But.
You could tease us a little bit, but I mean.
Uh, I have heard suddenly a lot of interest for our development of the vacant property next to the KFC on Ford Road. By the original owner and by other, other owners. It might be Dunkin' Donuts, maybe, I know we've heard, so they, they are interested in coming back, it might also be someone, I know I have a person interested in trying to locate a site for a, what is it, New York Bagel, Bagel?
New York Bagel?
The one in Dearborn, so we're trying to find a property for him. I have had some discussions with several different people about the Knights of Columbus property. So our discussion last month has helped considerably, because I've been telling them, these applicants, how the planning commission's preference, and a couple have taken it to heart, rather than going for apartments, they think the townhouse concept might be intriguing to them. So I don't know, you know, these are initial conversations, so we'll see, and then there has been some discussions about Warren and Inkster. It might be that in intermediate or initial occupation of the existing building, at least the T-Mobile building, by like a carryout restaurant, but we'll see. But most of those, some of those would be coming before you, some of them are just redevelopment of existing properties. For example, I also had a discussion today about potential redevelopment of the old bowling alley, and it's more of a medical situation for medical offices, so. So a lot of redevelopment of existing structures, so that's why sometimes you guys don't see those, those renovations, but the new construction, we'll, we'll see if, you know, but.
And so far as new construction, the Dunkin' Donuts originally, he wanted to put that up on the old Checker's site at Ford and Harrison.
Yep, yeah.
But as I understand it, he over, overbuilt at his other location, which is on the corner of Plymouth and Wayne Road, that went way over what I guess he planned on.
Same guy, Mario?
I'm not sure, it's quite possible, though, because I don't believe, any, I haven't seen any ownership changes of that property, so I get the feeling the gentleman is now ready to move. But with, in this business, as you know, sometimes there's a lot of talk, and then trying to get them over the finish line is another story, but hopefully, we'll be seeing more things soon.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. King?
Uh, any movement on LA Fitness or, or in Jewelers, I know we've talked about.
No, I haven't heard anything on those, unfortunately, not recently.
And it's out.
Is there, excuse me, is there any possibility that LA Fitness may reconsider as the economy improves?
That, I don't know, I, honestly, the way they were very tepid initially, I'm not sure, so I don't know, other people's have more comments, but, no, I don't, I'm not sure.
Yeah, okay.
Eric, Brian, anything?
Nothing today.
Okay, I have nothing either. So, next regular planning commission meeting will be Thursday, February ninth, 2023, and if there's no other discussion, meeting's adjourned.